Call to all the City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1243, 20th January 2015. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible). Call the roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Cottle?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lives?
Here.
Sethon?
Here.
All members of council, on account of four, item number two on the agenda is the minutes. Council members receive the minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three, presentations, the first presentation, item A, January Business of the Month Award, KMR Training Center and Driving School LLC, Mr. Brim.
Mayor Members of council, thank you very much. As the mayor noted, our January Business of the Month is KMR Training Center and Driving School. This is a family-owned and operated business that's been in Forest Park since its opening in 2005. They've distinguished themselves and their business by treating each other and every customer like they're a part of the family. Other companies may offer similar services, but KMR provides them with a personal touch. These services come as needed to the people that they serve. There are two components to this fast-growing business. The first is a fully licensed driving school that is trusted by adults and teenagers alike. Their experienced instructors recognize that driving is a serious activity that demands responsibility, know-how, and attentiveness. Fortunately for their students, KMR's expert instructors can help even the most nervous new driver overcome any stress and ultimately become a top-notch driver. They offer classroom training, online education, behind-the-wheel training, and a road test simulation so drivers can experience exactly what the road test is like. In fact, over 95% of their students pass their road tests on the first try. That's a pretty impressive statistic. The KMR Training Center provides individualized services, invaluable resources, and innovative opportunities for training, employment, enterprise development, to meet the changing needs of our communities. CPR and first aid training is one of the many programs that support and educate the public and the general public and healthcare professionals in this area. Again, expert instructors manage these programs that enhance and improve opportunities for every segment of our community, ultimately increasing the number of people trained to provide emergency care. Earlier I mentioned this is a fast-growing company, and indeed, our own Building Department Director, Rafiq Nikouzi, and I explained to Kalina, if you impress Rafiq, you've done something. Rafiq nominated this company for tonight's award because they had just completed a significant expansion and renovation of their office at 1244 West Kemper, just across the street from our building. So in recognition of the company's impressive growth and expansion, it's certainly our pleasure tonight to recognize KMR Training Center and Driving School as our January 2015 Business of the Month. And accepting the award this evening is company president and CEO Kalina Robinson and a key member of her staff, Tamika Shepherd, who's the director and instructor at the facility.
(Applause). Congratulations. Flag read, City of Forest Park, Business of the Month, KMR Training Center and Driving School LLC, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and the development of the City of Forest Park. We thank you, we're proud to have you in our community.
Thank you.
And we hope to see you again.
(Applause). I would like to thank everyone for coming out to support me, and I cannot go without recognizing my staff and Tamika Shepherd, she has been with me since day one. And also Tiara Williams, who is not present tonight, but again, I could not have done it without them supporting me. And I also have other staff within the, sitting here, Ms. Donna Howard, I want to recognize her as well. Also, my parents are present, and my mother-in-law, and unfortunately, my other half could not make it, and, but he is a big support as well, because he helped me with the renovations. So, again, I couldn't have done it without everyone's support and love, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
(Applause). The next presentation is, presentation by We Thrive, Lieutenant Jermaine Hill. You would come forward for your presentation, please.
Good evening. Esteemed members of council, guests, it is my pleasure to introduce to you guys Ms. Kathy Lorto. She's the Assistant Health Commissioner of Cincinnati, Ohio, and she's here to present our community with We Thrive signs.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank you as a council for your leadership in adopting this resolution. You know, the vision of Hamilton County Public Health is healthy choices, healthy lives, healthy communities. We can't do that by ourselves. So, we are so happy that you've decided that it's important enough for the residents of your community to take that journey with us. We really like the idea that this effort that we have allows the community to decide on the changes they want to make, and we can help guide them. So I'd also like to thank Jermaine for being the leader and bringing this to your, you know, to your community and explaining it in such an eloquent way that they decided to vote for it. So with that, I'd like to present this sign to you. We hope that you can, you're one of only seventeen We Thrive communities within Hamilton County, and we really hope that you all will be seeing this sign displayed.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Looks like it'll fit perfectly, and it's even got the right colors.
Exactly, exactly. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
(Applause). Well, thank you. While we're here, I'd like to thank the members of We Thrive Forest Park. If you guys could either stand or raise your hand when I call your names, let's see, we have Kimberly Chelf, she's with Hamilton County Public Health. We have Ms. Rosalyn Moore. We have Ms. Betty Morgan. We have Ms. Janet Steele. We have soon-to-be Dr. Pat Backus. We have James Ward. And then we have a guy sitting in the back, you may recognize him, he's Chief Alfie Jones. And also, you have a councilperson that's on the We Thrive Forest Park group, Councilperson Sheila Cottle. I want to thank you guys so much for giving us such a strong knowledge base and giving us that energy that Forest Park needs to get where we want it to be. In accordance with our goals to prevent diseases, protect children, adults, and families, and to promote healthy living principles aimed at improving the overall health and vitality of Forest Park, we will support Hamilton County's We Thrive initiative by proudly displaying these wonderful signs. Martin Luther King made the statement that life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you going, what are you doing for others? The We Thrive Forest Park group, our aim is to uplift, educate, and love our community. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you of We Thrive, and thank Lieutenant Hill, Chief Jones, and everyone that's involved. This is definitely a worthwhile project, and we look forward to working with you for years to come. And as with everything in Forest Park, We Thrive because of our volunteers, and we're very, very grateful to you for volunteering to make this project successful and make it work for Forest Park. And anything that we as council can do to make sure that that moves forward and make it successful, ask us, and if we can, we will. Again, thank you very much. (Applause). At this time, we will have Councilwoman Denise Holt come forward, and she was going to do presentations of plaques and awards for the holiday decorations.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. These are the awards for the 2014 holiday entries. The first person is Mark and Sharon Spencer, Most Festive.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ad Debo, Ted, Deborah, and Andrew Blasick, Christopher Harris, Norman Harris, Teresa Davis. And that was for holiday spirit.
Thank you so much.
Mark Beech, Ruben Darrell Maxwell, and Hildreth Fairman, Bill Brocker. Caesar and Barbara Borger, Goble, I'm sorry, that's the only name they gave me, your last name.
Thank you very much.
Vivian Cowherd. Mary Sims. Pam and Edward Roberts, and Herman Rusin. On behalf of the Beautification Committee, I would like to thank you all that participated in the holiday, the lighting during the holiday season, and thanks for keeping the City of Forest Park lit during the holidays. I look forward to seeing more houses lit up next year and more entries in this. Thank you all, and have a great 2015.
Thank you. (Applause).
Can I speak, because yours are gorgeous. (Inaudible). You know, someone was really here to drive around to try and see some of them, but I didn't see all of these.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is communications from the public, and as always, prior to during the communications from the public, we invite everybody to stay, but those of you who must leave or feel that you need to leave, please feel free to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thanks for hitting a home run, man. (Laughter). Yeah. And before we move into item number four, the communications from the public, I would be remiss if I did not thank Councilwoman Holt for organizing and moving forward with the holiday beautification and decoration project. And as she stated, it's very good to have people to decorate their homes and yards and whatever during the holiday season, and hopefully, this will continue and we will have more people to do so. So again, Councilwoman Holt, thank you very much. This time we move to item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions or concerns to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comment or question. Council meetings will take recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward and sign in, with your name and where you live. Anyone?
(Inaudible).
It's your issue, whatever you'd like.
My name's Vivian Cowherd, and I live at 10940 Corona Road, and I've been there twenty years. And we have an issue of a hydrant that is up the street from us, and it has been leaking for twenty years. And every winter, it freezes over, and it was so bad last week, it was like frozen over halfway out into the middle of the street. And we need to know what we need to do to get it fixed.
Question, is this a fire hydrant?
It's coming out, yeah, it's freezing from the fire hydrant, right in front of the fire hydrant, all the way down the street. At least, what, three houses down, four houses down? And it just, it's constantly wet, right there. I mean, summer, winter, spring, fall.
Okay.
All the time.
If you would give, if you would give us your contact number, rather than doing it publicly, if you would walk over and give your number to Mrs. Hoffman at the desk there, your phone number, so we could have a way of getting back in contact with you. Or if you'd like, you can just write it out there with your name, name and address and phone number, and the city manager will look into this matter either with Public Works and/or the Fire Department to see what's going on there. Thank you very much. Mr. Hodges?
Yeah, let me indicate, we'll definitely check it, we'll check it tomorrow, and to make sure, one, you say it's a fire hydrant, because normally, we do maintenance on our fire hydrants every year, so it's kind of strange if you say that it's been leaking for twenty years, but maybe it has. But one of the key things, we want to make sure that it's water coming from the hydrant, and not from a, for example, a downspout or sump pump or something else that's flowing out there.
(Inaudible).
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is a report of standing committees. The first of these reports would be Public Improvement and Facilities Committee, Mr. Southall.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to City Council and residents of Forest Park. I have two items I'd like to highlight in my report. The first is under Economic Development Projects, the work at Wynton and Gilmore Corridor is still underway. This is the project that deals with the Port Authority and City of Fairfield and the City of Forest Park. And my understanding is that the review report is due in February, and this document should provide us with some needed guidance as to how best to redevelop to keep properties that share the gateway. Also, it's been reported that we're, staff is working with local developers interested in completing the third and final phase of the Mill Road Station. The second item I'd like to talk about is the Hamilton County Company Annual Meeting, which was held on January the 16th. That meeting was attended by myself and other members of council and some staff members, and understand the, some members from the Chamber of Commerce. At that meeting, the HCDC Annual Meeting Awards Luncheon at Cooper Street Creek Event Center, the event highlighted Emeritus, who was recognized as an impressive investment in Forest Park, and the HCDC presented company officials with the 2014 Ron Select Economic Development Award. It calls the attention to the best project in Hamilton County during the past year. Emeritus built a new 70,000 square foot office at Caroline Park last year, which kept, which maintained 600 jobs in the community. So congratulations for that, and that is the end of my report, Mr. Mayor, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none, Mr. Southall, I do not have any items on the agenda for the work session under 26. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next committee report is Ways and Means, Committee Councilwoman Herbie.
No report on Ways and Means, but I will say that I also attended the Hamilton County Development Corporation's luncheon, and I want to also offer my congratulations to Emeritus. We're very pleased that they made a recommitment to Forest Park by building this new building, and we look forward to a good partnership with them for many more years.
Questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Councilwoman Herbie, I have one item on the agenda for you, salary resolution amendment, engineering tech. Do you have anything to add?
No.
The next committee report is Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening, but I would answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, Mr. Burns, I have no report, no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Mr. Burns, I would like to take this opportunity to extend an apology to you and the Joint Committee for the School District and Council for not being able to attend the last meeting that you had, and I'm sure that you will give us notification as to when and where the next meeting will be.
Yes, actually, we were, I have discussed that, and we'll have that meeting in February, on the same Thursday, but I'll send out a notice to remind everyone, but thank you.
Yeah, good. Thank you, sir. Next committee report is the Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no report this evening, but I would like to say I also attended the HCDC luncheon, it was really great to see Emeritus there, a lot of their staff came, and they're quite a family, so I really enjoyed being a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cottle, I have no items on the agenda for you for the meeting under 26. Do you have any to add?
No, thanks.
Next committee report is Human Resource Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Item F, Public Safety Committee, Councilman Lives.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items that were in the departmental reports. Once again, the Fire Department always puts some excellent information in there, this time it comes from the State Fire Marshal, and it's on being safe during extreme temperatures. I'm happy to report that today wasn't one of those, so we've been very fortunate, but they do give some excellent cautionary advice on what to do, especially if you're trying to use alternate heat sources in your house, which can be very dangerous if they're not done correctly. As far as the Police Department, their training unit is working on use of force and a new training format, and their new forms are more detail-oriented in the use of force. Also, at the school, Vita Harris and Jermaine are working on a youth summit that is tentatively higher, going to be held in May in Forest Park. And that would conclude my report, unless there's any questions, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Lives? Hearing none, Mr. Lives, I have no agenda item for you for the 26 work session, do you have any to add?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
The next committee report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications, that is my committee, I have no report. I would answer any questions if there are any, and at this time, I have no questions, no items on the agenda for that. I would, however, suggest to you that there may be one additional item added to this, probably in relation to civil service, and I would speak with Mr. Hodges, and if so, that will be placed in the, in the minutes in your package for the next meeting. Moving on to Mayor's Report, item number six, I would just mention that I too attended the HCDC luncheon. It was quite an affair where awards were given, and as has been previously mentioned, the Emeritus Company received one of the most prestigious awards for, that's given by this group for each year. And as also has been previously mentioned, we are delighted that they have made a commitment to us to remain in Forest Park and to continue to be the great partner that they are. And I would like to personally thank Paul Brim for all his work in assuring that that happened, as well as all of the overall work that you do, Paul. Thank you very much. You are good for us, and hopefully, we're good for you. The next committee report would be the City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll only report that departmental reports have been completed, included in the council packet, and also placed on file with Clerk of Council for public inspection. That would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hodges? Hearing none, thank you, sir. We'll move to item number eight, other reports, and the first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the opportunity to review the proposed ordinance number one, which is on the agenda tonight. I know there's concern about having the Board of Elections and the county approve and perhaps suggest, if necessary, changes. Based on that, I've researched how we could handle this expeditious matter, and I would recommend tonight that we proceed under new business on that ordinance, number one, as emergency legislation. It'll have to be read in full tonight, but as emergency legislation, we could cover that in one reading and a vote tonight, if it passes by two-thirds. That would allow us to get it down to the county in case there's any last-minute changes that need to be made, and under our emergency powers, since it deals directly with the health, safety, and welfare of the community, it easily qualifies as emergency legislation. The other item is the ongoing issues at the Forest Fair Village Mall, as it's now known. We had a meeting on Friday, several representatives of both cities, plus the builder, builders' representatives were there, or the owner, rather. The owner has retained the services of an expert in the field of remediation, Sarah Rice. She has made good progress. The maintenance personnel and Silco, who work for the owner, have resolved a number of items. There's some items still outstanding, they are being worked on this week, we hope to have a report by Friday, but certainly to resolve the pending appeal, which is in the Common Police Court of the building violation notice, it's hoped that an agreement can be worked out such that it would be a consent judgment order, which would be enforceable, and we've made very clear that we want certain specific deadlines, and they have essentially agreed with those certain specific deadlines. Some things will happen later than sooner because certain parts have to be ordered, and it's unknown whether the parts are available, how long it takes for parts to come in, but the work is being done, and there is progress on that issue. Other than that, if there are no questions, that would be the end of my report.
Any questions for the Law Director? Mr. Hodges?
Not necessarily a question, but first, we want to certainly thank the Law Director for representing the city on this mall situation, and I also want to try to clarify that although the mall has been working and making progress, and they'll, you know, probably continue, this has really been somewhat of a continual thing with the mall, where they appear to do just enough to stay within codes and increase a conflict for us, because people are wanting to see progress on the mall in terms of its operation. And although this is, is a situation where I believe they will make progress on the code violations, in many cases, they're, they're not really doing something to put tenants in that mall, and that's where the difficulty- Director for representing the city on this mall situation, and I also want to try to clarify that although the mall has been working and making progress, and they'll, you know, probably continue, this has really been somewhat of a continual thing with the mall where they appear to do just enough to stay within codes and increase a conflict for us because people are wanting to see progress on the mall in terms of its operation. And although this is, uh, is a situation where I, I believe they will make progress on the code violations, in many cases, they're, they're not really doing something to put tenants in that mall, and that's where the difficulty is. So they may be able to make improvements, but part of that improvement might be to close down or shut off part of the mall so it's not adversely affected by the violations, and then work on the violations. So, again, it's good that they are looking to make some improvements, but it's, I don't want to mislead someone to think that, oh, well, they're making progress also in terms of the operation of the mall. And again, I, I certainly know it's not any bad reflection on behalf of, of the attorneys involved, and we got our attorney, Fairfield has their attorney, the mall has their attorney, and they're working out agreements, and, and again, that's progress in that sense, but it's not progress in the sense of the overall operation of the mall. So when the public asks us what's going on with the mall, we'd like to have a much better report, but unfortunately, if they comply with the code violations, that is far as we can go since they are actually the owners of the mall, so.
If I may, Mr. Hodges is exactly correct. We're working on resolution of these fire code issues, and they will be closing portions of the mall off in order to comply with the order. As, that is a different issue than business viability. Mr. Brim, I know, was at the meeting, or the last two meetings, and I know he's been working very hard with several people, Port Authority, everybody, to try to do something with that property, but comments I have heard indicate to me that the owner does not have the financial wherewithal to really promote and build this facility, and in all likelihood, he's looking to sell the facility, having bought it and then finding out that he can't do anything with it, so.
So, the, the last comment and the follow-up is to just indicate that we are aggressively trying to move the ownership to make some progress, but at the same time, we really have kind of ran out of patience with their constant pulling rabbits out of the hat for, for being able to, to meet certain deadlines and requirements, but that has been their mode of operation. So we're, we're very disappointed in them on, on the overall operation of the mall, obviously, but nevertheless, we, we've got to work with them when there's efforts made to comply with the code violations.
Mr. Burns?
So considering these remediation issues, and the fact that they, they are opting to close sections of the mall, you know, from a, I guess, from a, from the public, could they reasonably and ethically sell that facility without totally remediating it?
Absolutely. It'll be sold as-is.
So it'd be an as-is sale with no disclosure?
There would be no representation. I mean, the, the only people that could be misrepresented are the people by the swampland that we have out back here. I mean, it's, you, people are gonna look at the mall, they're gonna know who the tenants are, what the financial status of the mall is, and these areas that are being closed, such as Biggs, they're gonna be physically, visibly closed, so that premises will be sold as-is. There'll be no representations.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Next, next report is the Clerk of Council, Mrs. Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that Resolution Number Zero Five Dash Twenty Fifteen was posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you all for your reports. Mr. Brim, would it be possible that you could give, you could come to a work session to just kind of give us an update on the mall issue from your standpoint? We, we know that it's not, not, I'm not asking you to do it now, but I mean, next week, if, if that's possible. Or if that's not enough time, then we can put up?
I think Counselor Southall mentioned in his report about the Witten Road, Witten-Gilmore Corridor study. It would, I certainly can come in advance of that, but that study is probably, this is one of the gateway properties that's gonna be addressed as part of that study, so.
All at one time, if it's your convenience. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda, item number nine, new business. On the new business, we have an ordinance, item A, Ordinance Number Zero One Dash Twenty Would the, this, this order must be read in full. Would the clerk please read this ordinance in full?
Ordinance Number Zero One Dash Twenty Fifteen. An ordinance providing for the election on an additional tax levy and declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten-mill limitation for the purpose of operating and maintaining a fire protection department and emergency life safety services and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Forest Park Fire Department provides fire and life safety services and educational programs to the residents of the city of Forest Park, and whereas there now exists one fire fund levy in the amount of nine point seventy meals, which was approved by the voters in two thousand and eight to continuously provide for fire and life safety services, and whereas an additional tax levy is required for operating and maintaining a fire protection department and emergency life safety services. And whereas the amount of taxes that may be raised by levy at the maximum rate authorized by Ohio Revised Code Section Five Seven Zero Five Point O Two, without a vote of the electors, is determined to be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the city's fire and life safety personnel and equipment. Therefore, it is necessary to levy an additional tax exceeding that limitation for the fire levy fund. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all the members elected thereto concurring. Section One, that said tax is in addition to the existing tax that totals nine point seven meals. Said addition will constitute a new tax of five point seven five meals for each dollar valuation, which amounts to point five seven five cents for each one hundred dollar valuation. Section Two, the levy shall be continuing. Section Three, said additional levy shall be placed on the levy list beginning in the year twenty fifteen and contained until, and continued until terminated or decreased by ordinance of the council in compliance with the provisions of Ohio Revised Code Section Five Seven Zero Five Point One Nine, and is to be levied for collection on the tax duplicates beginning in twenty sixteen and collected at the earliest date allowed by law if a majority of electors voting thereon vote in favor thereof. Section Four, that pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section Five Seven Zero Five Point Two Five, the following notice of this intended election shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the city of Forest Park one week, one time a week for four consecutive weeks prior to the election. The question of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten-mill limitation shall be submitted to a vote of the people of the city of Forest Park at a primary election to be held May fifth, twenty fifteen, at the regular poll, which shall be open at six thirty a.m. and remain open until seven thirty p.m. on the date of the election. The proposed tax is for the benefit of the city of Forest Park, Ohio, and for the purpose operating and maintaining a fire protection department and emergency life safety services. The proposed tax is an addition of five point seven five meals, all outside of the ten-mill limitation. The addition shall constitute a tax of five point seven five meals for each dollar of valuation, which amount of point seven, point five seven five cents for each one hundred dollar of valuation for the duration of the levy. This levy will be continuing. Section Five, the levy shall be placed on the ballot in the following form. Proposed Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services Tax Levy, addition, City of Forest Park. A majority affirmative vote is necessary for passage. An addition of five point seven five meals to an existing tax levy of nine point seven meals for the benefit of the city of Forest Park for the purpose of operating and maintaining a fire protection department and emergency life safety services at a rate not exceeding five point seven five meals for each one dollar va, valuation, which amounts to point five seven five cents for each one hundred dollar valuation to be levied for a continuing period of time. Section Six, that the Clerk of Council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio, is hereby directed to certify a copy of this ordinance to the Board of Elections, Hamilton County, Ohio, at least ninety days prior to the primary election on May fifth, twenty fifteen, and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice of election of question levying, levying said tax to be given as required by law. Section Seven, to pay the cost of publishing the notice of this proposed tax levy and any other related costs, there is hereby appropriated from the fire levy fund the sum of twelve thousand dollars or so much thereof as may be needed. Section Eight, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city of Forest Park to expedite the delivery of the ordinance to the Board of Elections in order to provide ample time to notify the city of any changes that may be required prior to the February fourth, twenty fifteen deadline. This ordinance shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I move adoption of ordinance number Zero One Dash Two Thousand Fifteen.
Second. Moving second, that we adopt ordinance number Zero One Dash Twenty Fifteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, and this is the ordinance that's necessary to proceed with putting the proposed fire levy on the ballot in May. The proposed levy is for an additional five point seven five meals, and we estimate that this millage will cost the homeowner of a hundred thousand dollar house an additional two hundred and one dollars and twenty-five cents per year, or sixteen dollars and seventy-seven cents per month. We estimate that this should generate at least approximately one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and allow us to maintain our operation of twenty-one full-time staff members plus three administrators and a pool of part-timers. It will also allow us to maintain the facilities and equipment replacement schedule that will include the purchase of a new fire engine in two thousand and sixteen for six hundred thousand dollars, and a life squad and battalion vehicle for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen. The county auditor certifies that revenue, assuming the tax valuation of the city remains constant through the life of the levy, is calculated at one million, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and I would urge adoption of the resolu, of the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call a roll on the ordinance?
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Ordinance Number Zero One Dash Twenty Fifteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a motion, Mr. Lives.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolutions Number Zero Two, Twenty Fifteen through Zero Four, Twenty Fifteen by title only. These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolutions Number Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen through Zero Four, Twenty Fifteen by title only. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item B, Resolution Number Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen. A resolution confirming the designation of depositories by city council and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with those depository agencies.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, I move adoption of Resolution Number Zero Two Dash Two Thousand Fifteen.
Second. Moving seconded, that we adopt Resolution Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, we're required by Ohio Revised Code to bid out and review our banking services at least every five years. We've completed this request for proposal process and have not found any substantial benefits or big swing in the cost of the banking services, so staff is recommending that we stay with Fifth Third Bank and include it in your packet as a resolution to that effect, which I would urge passage of.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on Resolutions Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution Zero Two Dash Twenty Fifteen passes seven zero.
Next item on the agenda, item D, Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen. A resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Cincinnati Testing Laboratories, Inc. and the city of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of Resolution Number Zero Three Dash Two Thousand Fifteen.
Second. Moving seconded, that we adopt Resolution Zero Three Dash Twenty Fifteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, the Cincinnati Testing Laboratories project that we've previously discussed appears now to be moving forward. This expansion project has taken much work and some complex negotiations involving multiple jurisdictions. However, we've reached a point that the approval of our incentive package will seal the deal with this company to expand in our Caroline Business Park. The incentive package consists of two parts. The first is our consent to this county's enterprise zone agreement, which is seventy-five percent for eight years. The enterprise zone abatement applies only to new development, and no existing taxes are abated. This consent is covered by the following item on the agenda, and the other part will be the subject of the following resolution. I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call a roll on Resolution Number Zero Three Dash Twenty Fifteen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution Zero Three Dash Twenty Fifteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item D, Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen. A resolution consenting to the execution of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, and Cincinnati Testing Laboratories, Inc. to complete a project within an enterprise zone of Hamilton County.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Uh, yes, I would urge adoption of Resolution Number Zero Four Dash Two Thousand Fifteen.
Second. Moving seconded, that we adopt Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Uh, yes, this is the other part of the incentive agreement to secure the expansion project of C T L in Caroline Business Park. This project keeps an important member of our business community here in Forest Park. The county will grant them a partial enterprise zone tax abatement on the new building portion of the project, provided that Forest Park does not object and indeed passes legislation consenting to the execution of this agreement. I'd urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call a roll on Zero, on Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Fifteen passes seven zero. Is there any further business to come before the body? Any additional business to come before the body? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.